Thank you for the opportunity you have given us to meet tonight. We thank all who are here in person with us tonight and online. We ask your blessings on our country, our state, and this county. Please keep us all safe from injury, hurt, or harm. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would all stand, please. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the determination of a quorum, and I'll read out a planning commission member's names. And if you're here, if you can just please say aye. Ronnie Burrell.
Here, aye.
Tom Harrison. I believe I saw him online. Is his mic, is he muted? Tom Harrison, you can unmute his mic. No, he's online.
Tom Harrison, present.
Harrison, present. Karen Benton. Okay, she's not here with us tonight. Amudessa Ahmed.
I'm here.
Ernestie Stovall Goolsby. Is her, I think she is online.
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, good, okay. Welcome, Tawana Smith Fenty. Okay, I believe she's, she's here with us tonight, okay. The next item on the agenda would be the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Motion to approve by Ronnie.
Tom Harrison, second.
Second by Tom Harrison. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the July 9th meeting.
Ronnie Burrell, I make a motion, we approve the minutes, July 9th meeting.
Motion approved by Ronnie.
Tom Harrison, second.
By Tom. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion approved. And the next item on the agenda would be the rules for procedure for public hearing. We have a recording for you. We don't have audio.
If you are joining us in person, if you are joining us in If you are A lot of public comment card to register your intent to speak prior to the start of this meeting. If you are joining us virtually, you should have registered your intent to speak with staff prior to the start of this meeting. Each item of business will be handled in the order that appears on the agenda, unless upon motion of the planning commission, the order is changed. A member of the city or county planning staff will present each item to the planning commission and will further provide a recommendation upon each item of business. The zoning applicant or the agent will state their name and address and will have 10 minutes in which to make his or her presentation. Any portion of their 10 minutes may be reserved for rebuttal following the opposition to the application. After the applicant's presentation, all registered speakers who wish to speak in favor of the application will then be heard. The secretary will call all speakers by name in the order of persons attending live in the auditorium, then persons attending via the virtual meeting. Prior to speaking upon the item, each speaker will state their name and address. It will also be limited to a total of 10 minutes. Once the applicant has made his or her presentation and the speakers in favor of the application have been heard, the secretary will call upon the registered speakers of the opposition.
Hi, Tom, do you hear anything?
No.
Me either. I think they acknowledge and they do have a problem.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
We have nothing. Municipalities across the metro Atlanta area to, well, develop their community. So we have, we ended up using that money to partner with Georgia Conservancy. And we have Mr. Nick Johnson and Ms. Catherine Moore. They are, they are representatives from Georgia Conservancy, and they have a presentation for you.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt for a moment?
Yes.
Part of our Zoom people from the committee have not been able to pick up the audio. I was able to change mine by doing the expanded view. Show everybody if you might suggest that. I don't think two of our people will decide. We were be, we're able to hear it.
Are we working on that, or? It's working now?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, Lord, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. All right.
Mr. Chair, this is Catherine Moore with Georgia Conservancy. Would you like for us to proceed, or are we pausing for a moment?
Yes.
Okay, and again, I do apologize. I was one of those that did not hear Andre's presentation. Did he give an overview, did he read the executive summary? Again, I apologize, I'm just not sure where to pick up since I didn't hear what was covered.
Yes, he did.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Are you on video also, or just?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a? Her on video?
And you may not need, need to see me at the moment, there we go.
All right, there we go, all right, very good.
I'm sure I'm larger than life and larger than anyone wanted to see me. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for bearing with us. We're all learning to, to adapt, so thank you for indulging my questions. My name is Catherine Moore. As mentioned, I'm with the Georgia Conservancy. My title is Vice President of Programs, and I am also Director of our Sustainable Growth Program at the Georgia Conservancy. Understanding that Andre went over the executive summary from the document, my colleague Nick Johnson and I are just going to give a high-level overview. We're absolutely happy to go back and, and cover anything that the commission may want that we didn't cover. So just aiming for brevity and good use of your time, but certainly want, wanting to be fully transparent and discuss, discuss anything we need to. Before Nick takes over here in a moment and does a little more detail about the plan contents, I wanted to just cover who we are as an organization, the intent of the plan, and then I'll hand things over to Nick. So just for the audience, both there in the gallery tonight and at home, Georgia Conservancy is a statewide conservation nonprofit. We've been around for 53 years. For 25 years of that 53-year history, we have had a community planning program. It's very important to the Georgia Conservancy to see that communities continue to have life, especially redevelopment, reuse of buildings, reuse of space. We believe that is absolutely in concert with a larger conservation message. So as part of that, again, for over 20 years, we've been doing community development and community design services across the state. We were honored to be thought of as a resource for the county and for the community there in Millstead. And so we appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight and to have been with the community this past several months through the planning process. One or two more points. We do hope that all those who have viewed the plan, and should it go forward and be approved, who will then use it going forward, will be mindful that at certain junctures, like any good planning document, it should be revisited and updated. That is common practice. Also, I'd like to be sure that we didn't, we weren't able to cover everything. The planning document is designed to be truly a starting point and a guide for the county and working with the, the neighborhood and the neighborhood itself in determining their future and acting on that. But we do know that, that more things need to be covered down the road. Lastly, the plan is designed, and Andre may have said some of this, and my apologies for any redundancy. The plan is designed to support efforts by the county in the future to both help them pursue grant funding, pursue potential private funding, guide development in a way that's in concert with the community wishes, and support other activities as, as they may be detailed in our recommendations section that Nick will talk about. Last two points. We did do our best to document the community concerns, community desires, and the things that the community felt are opportunities as we best heard them for future investment and appreciation. And then I would like to note, and you'll see this here in a moment, that the plan includes recommendations that could be owned, if you will, by the county, but certainly things for the neighborhood to undertake on their own, not necessarily with any partnership from the county. So you'll see some variety there. We also outlined recommendations that are near-term, could be done more immediately, that are lower cost even, as well as things that are midterm and long-term that might take a little more, both in terms of manpower as well as in terms of funds to execute on. With that, I would like to introduce my colleague, Nick Johnson. He is our Senior Planner at Georgia Conservancy. He's going to care, excuse me, share a few points about the document itself. I believe many of you are familiar with it. It is available on the county's website for anyone who has not seen it. And I am remaining here certainly to take questions at the end. Nick, I'll pause and let you take over from here. And I believe that Nick is unable to mute himself, so whoever there's in kind of the, the pilot in control of the, there we go, thank you much.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I am honored to be able to present part of this plan to you. As Catherine mentioned, it's available for public consumption on the Rockdale County website. So I won't go into too much detail because I want to be conscious of everyone's time, but I will hit a few highlights. So I, I was also unable to hear Mr. Westbrook's presentation, but I think he covered the basics. So when we began this planning process, where we really started was understanding the history of Millstead. As you all know, it has a very special and unique history among places in Georgia and Rockdale County as well. We also did some assessment of current conditions, including a, a detailed and meticulous house-by-house inventory, again, speaking to that creation of data for future grant proposals that could assist the community. And we also held community and co, co-held with the county community engagement sessions, several open houses and several focus group and, and other meetings, as well as just engagement within the community when we were doing our site visits. So this is just the table of contents. As you can see, it follows that general progression and then ends with recommendations at the end. I'm just going to skip around to different pages here. Again, if you have questions about any of them, or please feel free to stop me. What we really tried to do at the beginning of the plan is tell or be a steward of Millstead's story. So we, we tried to put in a public document the history of Millstead in a way that is celebratory and, and comprehensive. And we relied on several people's histories of Millstead to do that, as well as some Georgia travel guides and assembling pieces, pieces from here and there. So this is an opportunity for people to understand Millstead's value from outside the community because surely the community already knows how special it is. We wanted to put several graphics in here to, to detail the community, but at the heart of it, we wanted to achieve three different goals. And I'm just going to read these to you. The first goal is to compile and amplify the history of Millstead Village so that others can celebrate its unique heritage and understand it as a special place. Two, to provide tools for the preservation of aspects of Millstead Village that the community wants preserved and for the improvement of aspects that the community wants improved. And then third, to identify current conditions and assets to better position Millstead Village for competitive funding opportunities that can help with those improvements. And we, throughout the process, we identified several community priorities, hearing from the majority of residents that came to our public meetings. And those kind of can be summarized in a few buckets. Housing is a big concern for the community, specifically restoring the historic mill housing that is in the community, especially if any of the houses have been neglected for a long time or if some of them have burned down as well. And you'll see in some of the recommendations that we make that it can be difficult to replace those housing units that have been lost because of certain regulations. And so we explored that in great detail. There are aspects of public safety that the community would like to see addressed. Availability of green space. Community space and community organization is something we tried to capture, as well as historical memory and commemoration. So don't get whiplash, I'm going to fast forward several pages. So generally, we tried to really expose the history of Millstead in this document through creative graphics like this and timelines so that people will understand where it came from so that we can better position it for where the community wants to take it. And this is all backed up by the data that I mentioned before. So as I said, we, we went house by house looking for things like building age, whether it was a duplex, because a lot of the houses used to be duplexes, and whether that was converted. This is, this is all to document the conditions of the community. We, we kind of identified three basic types of houses, their condition. And then because we are very excited about this kind of work, we went through and looked at whether houses and lots had, had specific kinds of porches or whether they've been added on to, which are all things that can help bring greater detail and competitiveness to grant, grant applications for housing improvements, facade improvements, et cetera. I'm going to skip ahead again. So we held several engagements with the community, and we engaged both in-person through a survey and then a few virtual meetings through Zoom after the COVID-19 pandemic kind of put a pause on, on in-person engagements. And we, we learned a lot of things at these meetings, which I've kind of already summarized before. So I'll just head straight to our recommendations, which, again, we, we separated into five basic categories. The first that we have here is community leadership. And these are some of the things that my colleague Ms. Moore was listing before. There are things that can be taken up by the community as small ways to build camaraderie and then also momentum towards making a change. Then there are more county-focused recommendations. And housing, again, here takes center stage. And specifically, we've broken up housing recommendations into subcategories because there are so many. And these touch on policy, things like zoning and development regulations, public works, including sewer infrastructure, funding. There are several grants that will help, that could help Millstead residents get facade improvements or landscaping for, for their properties. Safety and upkeep, increased code enforcement is in there. And then partnerships as well. There are a few recommendations on green space, transportation, specifically around accessibility, and then community character and history. So I know that I breezed through that very quickly. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have, but the, the main point is that through our community engagements and our on-the-ground assessment, we, we really think that the integrity of the neighborhood, the historic integrity needs to be preserved. And so our, our recommendations speak to that. They're also flexible, they're designed to, they're, they're designed so that the community can have future input into some of them as well. For example, zoning improvements would have to, or zoning changes would have to go through a public hearing process as well. So these are some of the recommendations, and I will yield the rest of my time so that we can carry on.
Any questions from the commission, or we can hear from the public and, and ask questions, either one?
Ronnie Burrell, I have a question. I understand most of the, the design here. The one thing that bothers me is the multifamily implication that's on here.
And Commissioner, let me make sure I heard you correctly. When you say multifamily, are you talking about the duplexes? I just want to, I just want to be, understand, I'm following you.
It's not apartments?
No, sir.
Okay.
And, and Nick, anything I say, obviously correct me if I'm mistaken. But no, one thing, Commissioner, due to the, certainly there are a few larger lots in Millstead that might have been some of the commercial structures, the hotel and way in the past or things like that. But for the most part, by virtue of it being a mill village, it is lovably walkable and small-scale and very intimate. And, and that's, again, by, by virtue of it being a mill village, and that's something that is so special about those, those communities. The, the lot lines are small, so it would be hard, you know, to put more than a very modest duplex on, on most of these. And you're probably familiar, I'm telling you something you already know for being familiar with the neighborhood and driving by. Is that helpful?
Yes, that's what.
Tom Harrison here, I have a question. Regarding the sewer connections, et cetera, we know that a lot of the lots are very small and could not be really considered for septic tanks. What is the actual sewer capability or access within the entire village area?
Yeah, we did not do, that's a very good question. We did not do an engineering-level study. I would defer to your Public Works Department on that. But to your point, for, for the, the few parcels that, that could be commercial more along Main Street and the, the traditional heart of, of downtown Millstead, that would hinder any kind of small business perhaps that might come in for the residential structures. To your very point, that, that challenge in getting sewer treatment on those sites becomes a hurdle in seeing new investment, new life, new homes in, in the neighborhood. And that's absolutely something that we've recommended there in the sections that Nick covered to be addressed. And it would need to come from sanitary sewer. But beyond that, certainly, please don't mistake me for an engineer, so I would certainly default as, as to capacity, ability for hookup, the potential for that coming online, you know, I would defer to Public Works on that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Steve Weinstein here. What is the timeframe to complete this? I saw short-term, mid-term, and long-term. Is that, this is all dependent on funding?
Yes.
Some may not happen?
You, you, you've got it, you've got it. And so that's why we chose not to put, and we've done this in other plans, and I'm sure you've seen this yourself. You may see a community plan say, well, from zero to six months, we'd like to complete these items. And then from six to 12 months, we'd like to do these. That is certainly something that the planning department or the community could set as a goal. You could take those same recommendations and then just decide, you know, we want to fast-track certain things and try and put a goal timeline on it. But to your point, we did not feel comfortable doing that simply because these are very uncertain times. The, the, the infrastructure is a big lift, and we did call it out long-term. But that does not mean that next year, an opportunity presents itself to the county with funding and bandwidth from Public Works, and something may move, a big project like that that we know is, is a tremendous undertaking could all of a sudden move to midterm or near-term because opportunities present themselves. So we were not trying to avoid setting timeline goals or a schedule, rather, we were trying to give flexibility and some pragmatism, if you will, by not assigning months or years to them, but rather giving the reader a sense that this is a project we could do soon and relatively quickly. This is something, this line item, this recommendation is, is, is a project that is probably, because it's noted as long-term, probably a year or more out. So we tried to put a relative frame of reference on there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, one more question, Tom Harrison. If I'm not mistaken, there are sections of the village that are bordering the city of Conyers, city limits. Is there any conversations that need to be had as far as compatibility of areas that might border up to the city?
I, I'll take a stab at that, and then I welcome Nick correcting me or adding additional thoughts. That's a great question. I would, it's not in the recommendations. I would, it's not in the recommendations section, but I personally, as a planner, would recommend where there are opportunities for the county and Millstead champions to have conversations with the city, more so on their end, to preserve your neighborhood character than us infringing, and I know you didn't use these words, and these are mine, infringing on Conyers. But anytime, of course, you've got those political boundaries so close to each other, it behooves all involved to have conversations about the future vision and what's happening there. But our project boundaries primarily follow the historical boundaries of the Mill Village. And so that's purposefully why they stopped where they did. And our intent was to try and honor, as Nick said, and celebrate that history physically, emotionally, and then with this future vision. So in short, the answer to your question is, one does need to be mindful of what's happening kind of across the fence, across that political boundary line. But I do think what we've recommended, which is mostly maintaining and improving residential structures, should not create any land use type of frictions with Conyers.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would like to ask a question. What percentage of funding is coming from grant funding? Is it 50% anticipated grant funding? It's just trying to get an idea of where your funding has been, how your funding has been for this project? Is it all grant funding that you anticipate?
Well, we did not cost out the recommendations. If Commissioner, if that's what you're asking, we did not, so that list of recommendations, we did not price those out. Nor did we then try and determine what then might be funding sources for them. Many of the recommendations would be county staff time. For example, looking at zoning or other things like that in the future, that would just be a matter of prioritizing the county planning department staff time. Obviously, the big lift that we've already covered, some of the infrastructure improvements, we know that is is certainly not inexpensive and that would be, again, under another department's budgetary purview and something that they would, I'm sure, hire a firm to do a cost estimate or preliminary design type of thing for. So we did not attempt to put dollar figures on any of these things. And I will also, let me go back and say that several other of the recommendations do fall under some community activities. Nick, I believe started off with that point of building identity and camaraderie and a neighborhood identity. And so some of that is time, but then could be modest things like signage, documenting the historic nature of of Millstead. And that's something that the county could invest in that's still expensive, but say, just a few thousand dollars to produce signs versus tens of thousands versus a million plus for sewer. So I can't answer your question because we didn't price it out. But it was our understanding when we undertook this effort for the county planning department that the hope and vision was that by having a planning document, it would solidify the county's future attempts to apply for funding. And I know you're familiar with this, whenever you go to someone, they'll go, well, does the community support it? Do you have a plan that's been adopted? You know, these are things that in the larger planning world, GFA, Department of Community Affairs, federal government, they always want to know, if you're asking me for money, is there a plan? And is there community support? So is that helpful? And please always, yeah, and please always ask me follow-up questions if I'm not being clear.
And I wanted to add to that, county has already started, we are in the process of writing three grants at the moment. Two of them are for the sewer capacity. One of them is for landscaping and then we got another one for the aesthetics. It was the Art Fund, I believe it was called. And that was finished about a month ago. I'm not too certain as far as that, but we are in the process of attempting to obtain four different grants to go towards this project.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board members?
If we have no other, excuse me, no other questions, I'd like to open up the public hearing. I just want both sides to know that you have 10 minutes collectively. For everybody that is speaking in favor of this project, whatever time that you have left over, county staff and Georgia Conservancy will have the rest of that time for rebuttal. So first, I would like to ask Ms. Hannah Fleming to come and speak.
All right, I got it on my phone. All right. I've lived in Millstead for four years with my husband and two kids. I'm here today because I want better for my community and a great place to raise my children. I love my little slice of Millstead, my house and my neighbors. But when I think about Millstead as a whole, I can't help but think of the homeless problem, the drug problems, theft, bad roads, sidewalks, trash, dilapidated housing, and overgrown brush. Something has to change. I would love to see new construction of similar mill-style homes built on empty, overgrown lots and sewer put in to make it possible. I would love for existing homes to be brought back to their former glory. I want new sidewalks and roads, beautiful murals and better street lighting. I want more families to want to move here. I want to see people take pride in where they live. Families out, walking along improved sidewalks, getting to know other families at the playground, spots for the community to garden, have meetings and barbecues. We bought our house because we saw the potential of the neighborhood and the character of our home. I, for one, am excited that the county is taking interest in our neighborhood and wanting to help restore and preserve the history we all love while updating and bringing Millstead back to life. I want to get rid of the stigma around Millstead. So when I tell people where I live, I don't get a raised eyebrow and, oh. I don't want to raise my kids here if there's no change. Millstead as it is now is not a great place to raise a family. But when I think of what Millstead could be, I think of Cabbage Town. What once was a poor, rundown mill town is now a thriving, beautiful community where people want to live, with little cafes and parks and spots for people to build relationships. Millstead needs this help and I'm afraid if this plan isn't put in place, Millstead will never see improvement. Progress cannot happen without change and Millstead needs progress. I hear fellow members of my community, many of which were born and raised here in Millstead, say that they don't want Millstead to change. But I can say with certainty that the Millstead now is not the Millstead they grew up with. And the new generation deserves better. My kids deserve better than what they have now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have Mr. Connor Tiedemann?
All right. Can you hear me? All right. Good afternoon. Connor Tiedemann, Hannah's husband, moved to Millstead four years ago to raise my family and to hopefully be part of making it a better place. I always dreamed of owning a historic house with a big front porch and friendly neighbors. And now I live in that house and I have those neighbors. But I also tell my family and friends which roads to take so they don't see any drug deals, prostitutes, or homes that have become nothing more than health and safety hazards. I want nothing more than to preserve the history and character of Millstead, but the homes that should be condemned, the homes that have burned and can't be rebuilt without this plan due to the sewer. Those don't conform to anyone's idea of the historic mill town we are so in love with. This community's fear of outside involvement is partially to blame for where we are today. I've heard neighbors express their disgust in some of these forgotten houses for years. But now those same neighbors with beautiful properties are terrified at the mention of code enforcement in the plan. I know what change comes when we do nothing and I don't think that's an option anymore. I see no alternative to this plan. So from here on, I hope that Rockdale County officials remember the capability this little village has shown to assemble and know that we are putting our trust in you to help us progress. Thank you.
I have a question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
If I understood correctly, you moved here in 2016. Four years ago, 2016?
Four years ago.
How much you paid for that house?
I don't know, 130 is?
130, how much your taxes are roughly?
Right now? My property taxes?
Yes, sir.
Going up this year, I know, right?
Roughly how much? Five hundred dollars, thousand dollars, two thousand dollars?
I don't know right now. I know that they're going up. I think, I just, I, this is my first year with the homestead exemption. I applied for it with plenty of time, I think, the year before last year. But I just, this will be my first year seeing the host credit or whatever they call it. I don't know why I didn't get it the first time. Homestead exemption, whatever it is.
Thank you.
I don't know what my property taxes are going to be this year. I got my bill, but I heard it's going up, right?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, can I have Ms. Catherine Lynn?
My name is Catherine Lynn. I live at 1750 Main Street Northeast in Millstead. I am speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Millstead residents you see standing behind me and many others who could not be physically present in this auditorium but are watching on Zoom and Facebook Live. This is our statement. We are appreciative that the county has taken an interest in Millstead and we are hopeful that we can work with the county to bring positive change in our community while preserving everything that makes Millstead unique and special. We do want a plan for Millstead, but one that is community-driven and focused on focused on addressing and improving existing conditions for the benefit of Millstead residents, not investors and developers. The 2018 update to the comprehensive plan included the goal of establishing Millstead as a historic district and developing design guidelines and furtherance of historic preservation. At the start of this planning process in July of 2019, we were told the county was seeking historic designation for Millstead Village. But by January of this year, that goal had apparently been abandoned without explanation. Instead, we were asked for our preferences on types of new housing and commercial buildings and where new development should occur in our neighborhood. Millstead Village has the largest concentration of historic housing stock in Rockdale County. And according to this plan, it has been remarkably preserved. Yet this plan does more to promote and encourage new development than it does to preserve and rehabilitate our existing homes. The number one recommendation in this plan is to bring sewer into Millstead to encourage new construction. Two weeks ago, we were told that the planning department is already preparing applications for CDBG and CHIP grants to bring in sewer and provide sewer connections. We do not want our roads torn up for months on end, simply so that our neighborhood will become attractive to developers while forcing existing residents already on septic to connect to sewer and start paying a new monthly bill. Although there are CDBG and CHIP grants available for housing rehabilitation, the county has stated that it intends to pursue sewer exclusively. We would much rather see a plan that recommends the pursuit of funds for rehabilitation to help restore and preserve our existing homes. We have elderly residents, veterans, and others on low or fixed incomes who can simply not afford significant repairs. Providing financial assistance to these homeowners would not only revitalize our community, it would help to preserve our historic housing stock and would better align with the goals stated in the comprehensive plan. Almost every house in Millstead is a single-family home. We want it to remain that way. We do not support a plan that encourages the construction of multifamily housing, duplexes, and ABUs. We do not support this plan that suggests turning larger houses into duplexes and encourages the county to assist developers in assembling properties. According to the real estate market analysis study that informed this plan, there is a near-ivan split between owner-occupied and rental property in Millstead and home prices are well below the county average. We do not need even more affordable housing added to our neighborhood. Although allowing multifamily properties to be built in Millstead will only accelerate more of it becoming rental property. We would like a plan that encourages home ownership rather than one that caters to outside developers seeking to cash in on an opportunity at our expense. Recommendations in this plan that promote infill development also bring the threat of more historic homes being bought up by investors for potential teardown to be replaced with new construction. We do not want to see our history erased. To recommend rezoning for the entire neighborhood to permit construction of new housing types other than single-family could be the first step down the path of erasing Millstead's historical past. We would very much like to see houses rebuilt on vacant lots, as long as the houses are single-family and complementary to the style that exists in Millstead. We believe this could be achieved through variances for those properties on a case-by-case basis. In this planning process, the Georgia Conservancy selected 15 people to represent our community and invited them to participate in a focus group to provide input on this revitalization plan. Thirteen of the 15 invited to the focus group opposed the current plan. We hope that it resonates with you. The efforts to inform residents and to ensure community engagement throughout this planning process were minimal at best. Although the planning department spent nearly $30,000 of taxpayer money on planning studies, it was not in their budget to provide notices to Millstead residents of either of the two community meetings. Once the plan was released, no effort was made to hold a meeting for Millstead residents to present and explain this plan to the people who actually live there prior to sending it to the Board of Commissioners for approval and adoption. Last week, we had a neighborhood meeting to discuss this plan on very short notice and outside on a 90-degree day and had a larger turnout than either of the county's two meetings. This demonstrates that our residents care about this plan and want to be involved in decisions being made for our community. All of us are ready to participate if only given the opportunity. We would like to work with the county to create a new plan for Millstead, one that involves our entire community and allows all residents to participate in the process of planning our future. We want Millstead to remain Millstead. We want to fix the things that need fixing and preserve our way of life and our historic homes. We do not want multifamily housing, we do not want sewer, we do want help. It would go a long way toward revitalizing Millstead if the county would simply provide the basic services we are entitled to as taxpayers. We need law enforcement to address the growing problems of drug activity and vagrants and homelessness in our neighborhood. We need the DOT to fix our broken sidewalks and streets and to address the cut-through traffic and speeding. We need code enforcement to enforce compliance and upkeep, especially on rental properties and vacant lots. We need them to address specific locations that are serious public health and safety hazards. We need the water to repair the water main on River Street once and for all before the streak collapses. These are our most pressing needs. Given the lack of community engagement, the concerns that are widely shared by many Millstead residents, and the recent exodus of the two planners driving this initiative, there is an opportunity for the county to come back and talk to us, to work with us, to create a new, community-driven plan that addresses our needs and will truly serve to revitalize Millstead Village. This plan is described as, quote, "the first step the county is taking to build and sustain the kind of neighborhood Millstead residents want to live in," end quote. If that is genuinely the goal, this plan is a very big step in the wrong direction. We hope that you hear us and will recommend denial. Thank you.
Can I have Dwayne Wiggins come up, please?
My name is Dwayne Wiggins. My wife, April, and I have lived in Millstead for 21 years. We renovated a house many had thought should be destroyed, but now it is a lovely home. In addition to everything that has already been said, we are opposed to this plan because it suggests our property could be a new commercial district on Main Street. We were not aware of this discussed plan and before it was already released. We did attend the two previous meetings, open meetings. The plan also identifies other properties belonging to long-term Millstead residents as candidates for their new retail space and candidates for new green space. These recommendations were made without any specific discussions with these residents that own these properties. And in some cases, despite their objections, not one of the Millstead residents who owns these properties is in favor of rezoning ideas promoted in this plan and no one was asked. We would like to see improvement in Millstead with a plan that involves all stakeholders and property owners. This plan is being pushed on us without proper discussion. Please help us to maintain the most historic neighborhood in Rockdale County with a new plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have Clayton Orwig come to the podium, please?
My name is Clayton Orwig. I'm a Millstead resident and property owner. I was also a member of the focus group for this revitalization plan. My wife and I own a large portion of the property where the mill once stood. It is right across the street from our home. I submitted documents for the commission members earlier today and I hope that you've had a chance to review them. This plan promotes ideas for the development of our private property and suggests it will become available to the public as a park or a restaurant. We voiced our opposition to having these ideas promoted without our consent or endorsement. We were ignored by the county. We were ignored by the county. The Georgia Conservancy, who authored the report, heard our concerns and tried to address them by making significant edits to this plan, effectively scrubbing out the references to developing our property. Their edits were vetoed by the Planning Department. On July 3rd, we sent a five-page letter to the Board of Commissioners informing them of the treatment we have received in this process and made it clear that our mill property is not for sale and that we will not provide public access to or through it as contemplated. To date, from Rockdale County, has not had a single conversation with us about the ideas it is promoting for our property. I ask that you recommend denial.
And we have Laura Baker come to the podium.
Hello. My name is Laura Baker. I'm a Millstead resident who lives on New Street with property adjacent to Catherine and Clayton's and also adjacent to the power plant on the river. I don't want you in my property. I don't want anyone else on my property. My property is private, and it's for me. Thank you.
Can we have Stephen Miller to the podium? You have seven seconds. Can I have Meredith Serrano to the podium? You have seven seconds.
Hi, I'm Meredith Serrano. I've been a resident for 12 years in Millstead, and since I just have a little bit of time, I'm going to say I didn't even know about the plan until July 2020, and...
Nico, Catherine, would either one of you like to speak in opposition? Or in rebuttal, excuse me?
No, I think the community has... You've heard the public comments, and it's for the board to decide. I think there's a fundamental difference of perspective on the intent with the mention particularly of the sewer and the infrastructure improvements in the plan with the way it's seen and feared by the community. I would like to say that Georgia Conservancy was not responsible for the public engagement or plan or the stakeholder selection committee that was brought up. That was, we were to provide content to those plans, but we did not do the invitation or the notification, those points that were made, and we were not paid the amount that was quoted by one of the public speakers. So I just wanted to clarify those few points. And I think that's it. I'm happy to, again, take questions if that's part of the process from the board at this point, but those are the only things I wanted to say.
Do we have people to...? Thank you. We have people sign up that are proponents?
Mr. Stephen Miller, can you come and speak now?
I want to first say thanks, and I appreciate the fact that you have decided not to push this plan forward without additional engagement. Millstead has been neglected for far too long. We've been told the best path to cleaning up our neighborhood is to unite and form a homeowners association. That's happening. Irony is, the current Millstead Village Restorative Revitalization Plan has both brought the community together to begin uniting and divided the residents due to an unclear understanding of what this plan will actually do to our community. There is fear that many of the items in this current plan will exacerbate current issues, be limited to new construction, take people's property through force or eminent domain, raise our taxes, and destroy the uniqueness of the community. There is fear that no real community engagement has occurred. There is fear that any approval of the plan as it exists today will carve this plan into stone, and everything written will occur, regardless of the desires of and the consequences to the community. Yes, our community has issues. The only... There's a business in the middle of the community. It's a former towing company with a lot that's full of abandoned vehicles. We have crumbling infrastructure. We have dilapidated homes. We have lax code enforcement. We have little sewer. Our roads are horrible. We have drugs and drug-related crime. We have homelessness. You can't drive down a street without seeing dilapidated or abandoned homes next to homes that people care about. We have a park which is not adequately maintained, and we have empty lots and blocked-off river access, which looks like abandoned county property, not private property. Will this plan address those issues? Does this plan take into consideration the desires and needs of the community? I don't know. I hear the revitalization plan wants to build apartments and multifamily homes in a single-family residential neighborhood. At the same time, I hear there's no imminent need for housing. In the current state of Millstead, why would there be a need for additional housing for new homes? I ask any of you, do you live in Millstead? Would you want to be moved to Millstead or raise children in Millstead the way in the current condition is? I don't know. I don't know. But I hear that the plan includes sewer, which will not be made available for current residences only to new construction or forced onto homeowners. I hear that if there is any river access or trails developed, it'll bring in undesirables from outside of the community who will not respect the area and simply leave trash behind, which the county will not police or monitor. Many fear that because this is that, because that is exactly what is happening in this splash pad, and will be many times worse if there are other facilities developed. I hear discussions of seeking historical designation for Millstead and preserving the heritage. But the mill itself, the reason Millstead exists, the power company owns it, crumbling, it's deteriorating. It's an ice, it's a blight on the river. It's an environmental hazard. It's openly accessible, even though there... And it could be a hazard, even though there are private signs up there. You know, the power company should be held accountable for what they're doing over there. At least, we're here because of the mill. But everything about it in the community is not bad. We're in a new portion of Rockdale County history. Great, caring people live here who want to make their life better. We're just minutes away from the only hospital in Rockdale, minutes away from the new elementary school, minutes away from a magnet school and the high school, minutes away from Old Town. We're in a good location in the county. It's a part of Rockdale. We are a part of Rockdale County. We don't want to be a blight on the beautiful place we call home. We don't want to be that neighborhood. We cannot be left behind this time. I hear county leadership can't be trusted, have mannerious promises and in the past failed to follow through or simply lied. I hope this time that the county will listen to both sides of the discussion, make the right choice, and stand behind the decisions that we all come together and agree upon.
And the public comment portion is closed at this moment.
All right. Okay. Public comment closed. Now we're here from anybody in the commission here to have any questions or comments.
I have a comment. I just... I don't understand why there's such a disconnect. I hear that, you know, the plan was a favorable plan to improve, but there's such an opposition for it. I don't understand. It's why... Is there a lack of communication? Is incorrect information being shared? I just... It was such a positive thing to hear you speak, and then after, the neighborhood has had such a strong opposition against it. Is it just falsehood that's being aired, or it's just not clear to me?
This is Mudassar Ahmad. You are not looking at the hall right now, so you don't know. It's more than 37 people who are against that, and they are sitting over here. And if I read the document correctly, it's only 210 households in that community. So this is one-third of the people. And during COVID, if one-third of the people are coming, they know better about their community. It's a right or wrong decision, but, you know, they are here to protect their community from the government-made decisions.
I think there... Steve Weinstein here. I think there's an agreement that revitalization is warranted, but there's a disagreement of how to do that. And I think the stakeholders need to have more of a say in this revitalization plan. As Mudassar said, there's a lot of opposition to it, and I think the county needs to work with the residents of Millstead to come up with a revitalization plan that will work for everybody. But again, it has a common goal of revitalization. It's just differences in terms of what to be done to revitalize the area.
This is Karen Benton. What we're dealing with here also is... Specifically, we've got a couple of... We've got hypotheticals. We've got a tangible plan, but that's what it is, a plan. We're in the middle of a pandemic. There's a lot of distancing going on. It's very difficult to have us... A lot of people get together, talk about something that's, for the most part, a hypothetical. They don't really know how this is going to go down. This is a historic neighborhood that generations and generations and generations have lived in. And it's very close to these people's heart. And it's not something they can accept just after four meetings. It's going to take some time. It's going to take a lot of time. And it's going to take not just wooing and not just one-on-one. It's going to take going to church, maybe, or spending some, you know, afternoons and getting to know these people, getting to know their neighborhood. As much as they... They adopted me. I had an injury a few years ago. They bought me lunch. They didn't know me. They bought me lunch every Wednesday. These are good people. They're a neighborhood. They're very close to each other. And I would say that they're probably not very happy about strangers with a plan coming in that they're not very sure about. So it might take a little bit of time. It's going to take a little time.
Yes. Okay. Ronnie Burrell. I think basically what I'm hearing from the residents, and I'm empathetic with them, is it's maybe too big of a plan. It sounds like things are moving too fast. And one of the things that are definitely... Everybody seemed to be against it. And I don't blame them, is the multifamily. I think this thing needs, if it's going to be done, needs to be done one phase at a time. It needs to be laid out, what's done in what order, and just done step by step with no multifamily. That's what I'm hearing from the residents. So what I'm hearing, I think it's premature to adopt this plan until more work... Correct.
Karen Benton, I'm all for the plan to be implemented. I think it's a great idea. But they're going to have to be very careful how they introduce this plan. This neighborhood wasn't there before the mill came in. The mill was a plan. This is, by definition, this neighborhood is a planned community to begin with. All mill towns are. Portadale, bid manufacturing. They've been trying for a very long time to revitalize that. It's failed over and over and over. People have talked about it. Cabbage Town, one of the people in favor, talked about it. Do you know how long they have tried? There are people in that neighborhood, generations. They were against it. But it's coming up. Grant Park, generations and generations and generations. It took forever. It's desirable now. It's going to take time. I'm for it eventually.
Well, I'm for revitalization eventually, too. Perhaps not, as I said, it's premature now...
Premature.
...to accept this plan, in my opinion.
Motion to deny.
All right. Motion by Mudassar Ahmad to deny. Seconded, Ronnie Burrell. Seconded by Ronnie Burrell. Any further discussion? All in favor, let's take individual vote. All in favor for denial, say aye.
Mudassar Ahmad, aye.
Ernestine Stovall Goolsbee, aye.
Hi, Ronnie Burrell. Hi, Steve Weinstein.
Karen Benton, aye for now.
Okay. All right. So the motion is unanimously denied, and I think the county just has more work to do with the stakeholders to get this new area revitalized that everybody can be happy with. What's that? Oh, Tom. We never had Tom. Tom, are you still there? Tom?
We've got Tom.
Is Tom still online?
I've been unmuted for the last 20 minutes.
Well...
But I agree with everything that the commissioners said, even though the vote has already happened.
Well, it hasn't happened properly since you didn't...
Well, I would like to just interject one thing, and that's the fact that I think the entire district needs to be considered a historic district before they even start a plan.
So that being said, are we to get your vote?
I vote aye with everyone.
Okay. All right. Now we have the vote. Sorry about that, Tom. Somebody muted you. So now the vote passes unanimously to a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to deny it this time. Thank you. All right. Now we're moving on to City of Conyers items. And we have item C1. It's the case number 032020, ordinance 1214. We can hold off a minute. You're welcome to stay, but if you need to leave, we'll hold off. Thank you for coming.
Come here. Got a round of applause.
Oh, didn't they give a recommendation? I don't think they did. Yeah.
All right. Moving on, the City of Conyers, item C1, case 032020, ordinance 1214. It's a request for special use permit to establish a packaged liquor store in Gateway Village, urban village zoning district. Location is 1081 Iris Drive. Lot size is 1.7519 acres. Owner's King &amp; Pratt LLC. Applicant Al Shaheed. In care of Julie Paquin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize for missing the last month. I'm happy to be here this month. Thank you for going quickly over that. This is a request for a special use permit for a packaged liquor store in the Gateway Village zoning district. The property, as some of you may know... All right, well... Some of you may recognize the property at 1081 Iris Drive as the former Poe Folks and then Folks Restaurant. It... Site contains, like you said, 1.017 acres, a 6,376-square-foot commercial building, and an 800-square-foot accessory structure, both constructed in 1984 for the... and an 800 square foot accessory structure, both constructed in 1984 for the purpose of a restaurant. The last restaurant to occupy the location was Folks. The property has sat vacant for a number of years. I do not know how many number of years, but it's been a long time. Has been zoned Gateway Village since the adoption of the Gateway Village District in 2016, and the site is in desperate need of redevelopment or revitalization. It is serviced by Rockdale Water Resources. It does contain approximately 368 feet of road frontage along Iris Drive. Going back, though, before we go into any more details, just for those of you that may be in the audience, a special use permit is to provide for uses that are generally compatible with the use characteristics of a zoning district, but require individual review of their location, design, intensity, configuration, and public facility impact to determine the appropriateness of the use of any particular site in the district and their compatibility with adjacent uses. Special uses may require the imposition of additional conditions to make the uses compatible in their specific context. There are eight criteria adopted by the City of Conyers Code of Ordinances that must be considered when deliberating the merits of a special use permit. And for the planning commission, those eight criteria are provided to you in your staff report with staff comments. The applicant's agent, Ms. Paquin, is here tonight. She did submit the application and did a wonderful job of completing that and addressing those eight criteria in the applicant's view as well. So there are some photos of the pitch of the property taken. You can see the condition of the parking lot. You see the condition of the building. There in the back corner, you see the yellow accessory structure and the former pole sign that was there that advertised the business. If there's, that is the current zoning of the property, Gateway Village. You see all the properties abutting it are the same Gateway Village, so it is at the start of, or the head of, the Gateway Village zoning district. If you have any questions of staff, I'll be happy to answer them at this time. If not, we'll invite Ms. Paquin to come up to the podium and speak. I will say, Mr. Chairman, that as far as the public hearing, I don't think anyone in the public, either on Zoom or Facebook Live, or any members of the public here in person tonight, heard the introduction and the rules and regulations. So I'm not sure if anyone formally signed up to speak either for or against. And I would ask that, at which time, after Ms. Paquin's presentation, that we verbally open it up to anyone who would like to speak for, and then give some time and allow anybody to speak against, if that's to your satisfaction.
Sure.
Thank you.
I had a quick question. That purple, what is that?
That purple is industrial, and there is a sliver of Gateway Village between the purple, which is industrial, and the subject site.
Okay.
That is a, you see the little flag, it looks like a little flag lot. That is the frontage. That's the actual road frontage to the hotel that is behind it, because every parcel has road frontage, or should have road frontage. That little elephant's foot, or triangle, or flag, whatever you want to call it, is that property's road frontage.
Dog leg.
Dog leg.
Thank you.
You've got it.
All right, now hear from the applicant.
Good evening. I hope everyone's doing well. I'm Julie Paquin, the agent for the applicant, Al Shaheed. I think Scott pretty much summed it up. We've read staff recommendations. We've read the Gateway Village design requirements. We are in agreement with staff recommendations. The building has been there for a long time. We believe that the building, the site, is a suitable place for a liquor store. We believe that it definitely needs some major improvements, and my client is more than willing to make those improvements there. And I'll reserve my time to answer any other questions. We seek your approval.
Tom Harrison here with one question. I didn't catch from either Scott or yourself, do you plan to tear the building down and build up, or use the existing building for the liquor store?
We would like to use the existing building, but we plan to make major renovations to the existing building. It will not look the same.
Thank you.
If it's possible. We're not 100% sure. We've had a contractor go in there. We think it's possible, but we're not sure. And so.
If not, do you plan to tear it down and build new?
He does.
With another building, if you tear that building and build another one, would it be about the same square footage? This one's six, over 6,000.
But we would like to use the same building if it's at all possible. So I've got some elevations that we did that are preliminary, if you'd like to see them. I noticed y'all don't have an overhead.
Just what we need in the pandemic is another place to get alcohol.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there's, at this time, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, we'd open up to the public hearing. If there's anyone in the public, either on Zoom or Facebook Live, that would like to speak in favor of this request, please raise your hand on Zoom or send a message on Facebook Live, and we can be addressed. Or if you're in the audience, you can please come forward. Are we seeing anybody raising their hand? And now, if there's anyone that would like to speak in opposition, if you're on Facebook Live, please reply to a comment, or if you're on Zoom, raise your virtual hand, or if you're in the audience, please come forward.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest we close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing and we'll hear the staff recommendations.
Yes, sir. So seeing as this building has sat stagnant for, in a vacant state for a lengthy period of time, and its condition is unknown, it would be in the best interest of the community for this building and property to comply with the design and architectural requirements of the Gateway Village Urban Village District, and that may mean raising the building and redeveloping the property. Therefore, staff recommends approval of a special use permit to establish a packaged liquor store in the Gateway Village Urban Village zoning district at 1081 Iris Drive with the following conditions. The street skate design standards of the Gateway Village zoning ordinance for arterial and collector streets as specified in section 8-7-44 subsection E, and including the three rail fence along the entire road frontage shall be designed, permitted, completed prior to the opening of business. Two, the maximum height of a ground sign shall not exceed 20 feet from the elevation of Iris Drive. Maximum size sign face shall not exceed 100 square feet facing east and 100 square feet facing west for an aggregate of 200 square feet. Number three, to ensure the safety of the public, security lights shall be installed behind the building in such a manner to safely illuminate the property to prevent large unlit areas. Number four, a newly constructed eight-foot-high, continuous, solid, opaque wall or fence shall be constructed along the entire length of the southern property boundary and shall extend at least 60 feet north along both the western and eastern property boundaries. Any questions? Staff will be happy to answer them at this time.
Scott, what about the buffer there of the Leyland Cypress? Is that to remain?
If the property owner is going to redevelop the entire site, then they can leave that buffer, or they can remove it and plant new. I would imagine that because it is in a mature state, that they would probably leave that and construct the fence behind those Leylands.
They mentioned in their application that it would be, will remain undisturbed. I didn't know if you, the city wanted to make that a requirement or not.
No, sir, we wouldn't make it a condition or a requirement, because if they have to get in there, if they have to do a complete site redevelopment, then that might be something that they take into consideration to utilize that portion of the site or replant a different type of tree, should they wish.
Other questions?
One of my concerns is the amount of foot traffic that it may increase, and the location, you have a lot of extended stays there and back and forth, and it's not have well-lit within a curve. There's no, it's just, it's not in a good location for a liquor store. And I was just, is there anything other stipulations that, you know, you can fence it off where you can't come from the back of it, or, you know, just the foot traffic that it's going to, that's possibly get from the weekly stays?
Yes, ma'am. That is what the purpose of condition item number three and number four. Number three is to, for the well-lit area in the back to prevent any dark areas for the safety of the public, or the safety of maybe employees that are going back there to dump garbage at night. But also, the requirement of the new fence constructed along that property boundary, or near the property boundary that's shared with the current site and the extended stay, is to fence that off to prevent the access. Currently, right now, there is a set of steps going from the extended stay hotel to the restaurant site, and I guess that served the restaurant well in its heyday, to have people staying in the hotel behind it, and they can easily walk to the restaurant for dinner. But that's not the case today. The intended use is a retail-type use, and it's not really in a walkable type environment as it is. So we want to discourage that activity from walking behind the building, going to the hotel.
I strongly agree, Scott, that, you know, it just, I see this as a potential problem.
Yes, ma'am. That was the purpose of the recommendation for that condition.
There's no ordinance in the regulations you can have in terms of how far away from a hotel or extended stay that the liquor store can be?
No, sir. Our ordinance does not prohibit liquor stores from locating near hotels of any type, and I would encourage that not to be a regulation.
Right, right, okay. I just asked.
I believe we have restriction on church and school and all those, but not, you know, those are another type of businesses, so there should not be. And I believe the business owner is more worried about the security and all that than, you know, the planning commission.
That's correct. That's, that's correct.
For the record, I'm not saying it should be. I was just asking.
Yeah, you're legislating a lot of morality there. You're getting a little bit too, too.
I understood the question, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Now entertain any motions.
Madam President, motion to approve as per recommendation by the city.
Tom Harrison, second.
Tom Harrison, second. Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All right, I'll call. All in favor, say aye, and please state your name.
Who seconded it?
Tom Harrison.
Madam President, aye.
Ronnie Burrell, aye.
Tom Harrison, aye.
Ernestine Stovall Goolsby, aye.
Karen Benton, aye.
Steve Weinstein, aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, we're moving on to item C2, case number 042020, ordinance 1215. It's a request for a special use permit to establish a transitional housing facility in the Office Institutional Zoning District. Location is 1555 Millstead Road. Acreage is 1.049. The owner is Robert L. Moore Disciple House, Inc., and the applicant is Robert L. Moore Disciple House, Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as we mentioned previously, what a special use permit is, where this is another special use permit we have before us, and I'm sorry, I keep looking behind me, I keep getting a pop-up on my screen, making sure you guys are not seeing it. The site contains 1.049 acres. It is, contains a 1,300 square foot single-family residential dwelling constructed in 1963. The property has sat vacant for at least the last 10 years. It does have access to the house from Millstead Road via concrete driveway that crosses two properties that are not owned by the applicant. The property is zoned, Office Institutional, and it is located within the, quote, "medical triangle" of Millstead Road, Millstead Avenue, Sigmund Road. This triangle consists of Piedmont Rockdale Hospital and a host of independent and supportive medical offices. There's some photos of the site. You can see there of the existing building and the overgrowth. And again, a special use permit is to provide for the uses that are generally compatible with the use characteristics of a zoning district, but require individual review of their location, design, intensity, configuration, and public facility impact to determine the appropriateness of the use of any particular site in the district and their compatibility with adjacent uses. Special uses may require the imposition of additional conditions to make the uses compatible in their specific context, and there are those eight criteria that must be considered when deliberating the merits of a special use permit. Now, what is a transitional housing facility? It is defined as a building or buildings in which is provided long-term but not permanent living accommodations for one or more persons who have no permanent residence and who are in need of long-term housing assistance, and which may also be provided meals and social services, including counseling, substance abuse, excuse me, counseling and substance abuse recovery assistance. Now, per the application, the Robert L. Moore Disciple House is a community service mission that will provide transitional housing and services for men recently released from the Rockdale County Jail. That is a overview of the zoning map. You see, the starred parcel is the parcel in question. All the property around it is O&amp;I. It has a small sliver of neighborhood business abutting it to the north, north-north-east, and the kind of open area, the donut you see there, that is a Rockdale County zoning, and the property across the street, across Millstead Road, is Rockdale County zoning. Now, within a reasonable time after the conclusion of the public hearing regarding the proposed special use permit, the planning commission shall make a recommendation to the city council to, A, approve a proposed amendment or special use as requested by the applicant. B, approve the special, the proposed amendment or special use with conditions. Said conditions may include rezoning to a less intense zoning district with or without conditions. C, deny the proposed amendment or special use, or D, table the proposed, the proposal to a specific date with the consent of the applicant. That is a small survey of the property in question, and the amount of road frontage on Millstead Road that they have is just a little bit a hair over 19 feet. If you have any questions of me, I'll be happy to answer them at this time. If not, we'll let the applicant, Mr. Moore, come up, or Mr. Harmon, come up and speak on behalf of his project.
One question.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought you had at least 30 feet road frontage.
This is a legal non-conforming lot, so it does not have the required minimum road frontage if it was a new lot created today. The access comes off of Millstead Road. The driveway is in the corner of a decel lane that goes into Dr.'s office that's in Rockdale County. It crosses over the little sliver of land that's about 20 foot wide, and then on to the subject property.
Do they have a cross easement?
I believe so. I do not have a copy of that, but I do believe they have a cross access.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Scott, this time? All right. We'll now hear from the applicant.
Well, good evening, and thank you for allowing us to be with you here today. You've got the staff report. We were able to see a copy of it as well. We greatly appreciate that. To speed things along here, I'd like to just talk about a couple of items that were brought up in there. First of all, we know the driveway is not entirely on our property. I don't know what the history of that is. Dr. Newman very graciously told Chief Morgan a week or two ago that he's not worried about it, and we greatly appreciate that, but when we fix the driveway, we do intend to slide it over so that it's entirely on our property. On page four, it talks about suitability of use. On page four, it talks about suitability of use. And honestly, I don't really understand this. It's, it's true that our house is not an outpatient medical office building. Neither are the private residences that are located about three quarters of a mile away. Neither is the rehab center that's about a quarter mile away. And neither will be the 150 apartments that will be built 700 yards away. This area is not zoned exclusively to be a medical office park. It's an area that serves various populations in a whole bunch of ways. We do have less than 20 feet of frontage on the Milstead Road and the house is almost invisible. We're working closely with Rockdale County Extension and the master gardeners to be sure that when we clean up and restore that overgrown yard, the house stays secluded. The place needs repair. Mr. Shane Persaud, who's with us tonight, an architect, is guiding us in that. Mr. Chuck Russell, who's a local builder, is helping us. We're, we're committed to doing this right and a big part of doing it right is being respectful of our neighbors and their businesses. On the same page, adverse impacts, and again, I'm confused. I mean, city, city zoning only allows for transitional housing to go on an O and I property. We're required to be in the same area as other offices. Doesn't matter where we go, we're gonna have that same issue. The question of reasonable economic use, well, sure, the property has reasonable economic use. As we consider that, I'd like for us to not forget the impact of failing to provide people the opportunity to successfully, to successfully transition back into life on the outside of the jail. And that begins with reducing recidivism costs. Now, fully discussed at this point, it'd take me longer than the whole 10 minutes that we're allotted. On page five, other appropriate matters. A concern was raised that our project would reduce property values. That's, that's a common perception. Academic studies have shown that it's just not true. But we all know that that's not what's important here. What's important is our experience right here at home. Rockdale House for Men, Rockdale House for Women, Phoenix Pass, and more, right here in Conyers, consistently filled to capacity, stable, productive, important parts of the community, located in residential and business areas. And every one of us in this room sees for ourselves each and every day that these fears of property devaluation just are not valid. Concerning developing more medical offices in the area, and please forgive me for being a little bit blunt about this, but the thing that's made that difficult in the past and that's going to make it hard going forward is not our house. It's the all empty medical office building that's already in the area. And there's a bunch of it. Finally, and probably most importantly, safety concerns. And again, let's just be very fact-based and very real about this. The property that we want to renovate and put into productive, pro-social use has been vacant since the last president passed away in 2004. The house has been vacant for 16 years. It's been broken into, it's been vandalized, it's been lived in by who knows who doing who knows what. People camping in the yard, setting up tents on the lot next door. The real danger isn't what might happen if our project is approved. The real danger is what's been happening for all of these past years. We do not come to this project with blinders on. Since the beginning, Captain Pass of Rockdale County Sheriff's Office, who's also with us tonight, has been an advisor to our project. Deputy Kilgore with RCSO is a board member. Sergeant Bishop, another board member, is retired from RCSO. Board member Mr. George has been teaching at the jail for who knows how long. I've taught there for a couple of years, teaching anger management class. We know this population. We are in the process of becoming part of Restoration Storehouse so that our men can have access to the best support that our community has to offer. Mr. Jeff Beach, Reverend Sheldon Landy, support us. And by the way, being a part of Restoration Storehouse also provides accountability for us, the board, as we operate the house. Our clients have to be employed as a condition of staying at the house. They have to meet personal goals. They have to follow strict house rules enforced by an onsite house supervisor. They have to be drug and alcohol free and they will be tested randomly and regularly. Some of them will be coming to us through the Rockdale Accountability Courts, adding another layer of accountability. And yes, these men will have every opportunity to grow spiritually. It's called disciple house for a reason. We are not proposing a cheap hotel. We're proposing a model facility for helping a very few men who are with us at any one time. No more than six, including the house supervisor. Our first board chair, Dr. Steve Pries, is a psychiatrist who will be helping us with client evaluation and intake screening. We believe that our community has a right to have people transition out of jail and be supported so that they can learn to live productively. Every ex-offender has that right, but we are not the right place for every ex-offender. Violent history, not eligible. Sexual or child abuse history, severe mental illness, not eligible. We are not and never will be properly staffed to treat those men appropriately. One more thing. Transitional housing is a community need. That's why Sheriff Levitt supports disciple house. Chief Wilson supports it. The county commissioners support it. We addressed city council last summer, told them what we're doing, and they support it. The project is a win-win-win. A 16-year blinded property will be restored. A community need will be met. Ex-offenders will have a supportive home, many for the first time in their lives. Ladies and gentlemen, our project is not a source of a problem. Our project is a solution to a problem that's existed in our community for a long, long time and it's a solution that will not adversely affect anyone. Thank you, and I would like to reserve whatever time is available.
Thank you.
We do have two people that are here to speak in support. Can I have Tommy Morgan come to the podium?
I'm Tommy Morgan and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Disciple House Group. This is a need that has been identified in our community and we are asking the support of Rockdale County and the City of Conyers in trying to meet this need. The need is that once these inmates are released back into society, they need a, a place where they can reside and pursue trying to get better equipped to get back into society. So we are asking that y'all approve of this, allow us to meet this need in the community. We are addressing this from a standpoint, it's not disciple house, but it is a community that should be concerned about this problem. So we hope that we will be able to meet this need. And if you would see fit, approve of this, we would certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Can we have Captain Dennis Pass come to the podium, please?
I'm very glad to be here today. And many of you know that for many years, some would say decades, this county, the city's been looking for opportunities to assist people that have made mistakes, that have wound up in our jail, succeed. Without that, many of you go back to the same thing. And that's why the sheriff, Sheriff Levitt, worked in starting our reentry program, our RSAT program. It's a six-month program where they get a lot of training from a good staff. We're working to create a solution so that it's not a catch and release program, meaning we release them from jail and then they go back to the same thing. And if they're not assisted with something that will help them make a difference in their lives, they're gonna come back, as we've seen it. We've seen it in our RSAT program where they're about two and a half times less likely to come back to incarceration after they complete the program. Many of these people that will go to this place have been very involved with that program. And I say that everyone will, I don't know. But I will say this, the criteria has to be very careful. Because if the criteria is not careful, the screening is not careful, and we do that well at, at the jail, at the sheriff's office, then it will not succeed. Now, that's why, since really the beginning, very close to it, we've been working with them. Is that me? No, I don't think I've done 10 minutes yet.
It's a total of 10 minutes. It's not an individual 10 minutes.
Oh, okay. Well, the sheriff supports it, and done right, it will succeed. I appreciate you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, just as the previous case, Andre, I don't know if you had anyone sign up, but they may not have known that there's a sign up.
Yes, they all signed up. We have one person here to speak in opposition. Veronica Garrett, can you please come to the podium, please?
Thank you for giving me a chance to voice my opinion. For, I've been in the community for about 25 years now. I'm OB-GYN, servicing Rockdale and surrounding communities. Since I've been here, Milstead Road, from Sigmund Road down to Misto, Milstead Avenue, has always been professional medical office space. Many of us have, many of the physicians have invested large amounts of revenue to obtain property at premium prices when we bought it, hoping that it would hold its value or increase in value over time. We have struggled to maintain our businesses in the ever-changing medical environment and now COVID-19 while enriching and providing services for the community. At this time, we feel that this project, although, although noble and is needed, is not the place for this, for the, this, this property is not the right place for it. We feel that it would negatively impact our property values and possibly increase unwanted elements. And we're asking at this time that you, requesting that you deny this petition. Myself and my ex-partner, we actually own the space that's next to this, where this house is. And it will, it will impact us. And we're hoping that you will see our views. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have Dr. Dolores Rhimes Anderson come to the podium, please?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Dr. Dolores Rhimes Anderson. To voice my concern for this, for this premise, this position. While it is very altruistic, I think many of us would agree that this is something that we would like to see happen for people who have been in prison and come out and need the opportunity to, to start lives with their, their lives again. I think we have to stand back and kind of look sometimes at where we are, where we are here in Rockdale, where we are in this community. I practice here for over 20 years and have a, physicians, we make an effort, a very, very concerted effort when we provide services in a community. It's very heartfelt. We can practice anywhere, but we make an investment in the community in which we serve. And it's a very, very important effort that we make. You know, the, the impact of this type of proposition, there's extensive literature about the adverse effects in the community with regard to the development of some of these projects. Perhaps, you know, it's not to say that there isn't a place for these projects. And I think we really have to consider where we are, where we are here in Rockdale County in this medical triangle, which is essentially where this facility is wanting to be placed. It's, it is a budding two medical facilities, medical off, potential offices. And we have to think about our patients. We have to think about people that we serve in the community and how this is going to impact them. Property values will be adversely affected. We've all made major investments in this community personally, as well as professionally. And as far as businesses coming into the area, again, will be adversely affected. So if we're talking about revitalization, if we're talking about improvement for the community here in Rockdale and Rockdale County, I think we really need to seriously look at this. I just feel very, very strongly, and a lot of the other providers in the area also feel similarly. Many of them were not able to be here tonight and have submitted letters for, for the committee and the board to review. And I would really, really hope that you seriously consider a lot of what we're saying. That, again, we've made investments here, we care about this community and do feel very strongly that this would be very adverse to the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have one person that would like to talk via Zoom. I believe the name is Rajesh. If you can bring him in.
Yes, that's me. Is everyone here able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the council. I appreciate your time. I am a landowner, partially two parcels away from this. We own the assisted living community there on Manchester Drive at bottom of the circle. So we are in close proximity and have followed this with a great amount of interest. We've recently only learned about it and based on what I've read and to address this from a zoning perspective, in addition to a landowner and business owner perspective, I do not see how this conforms to the general use in the area around the surrounding land parcels. We are a professional office community, we're a professional medical office community. I personally have invested a substantial amount of capital into our assisted living community and very proud of the services that we provide to our residents, to the families and the members of the community. I understand the need for these type of services and understand that there is a place for it. From a development standpoint and a business owner and operator standpoint, I find it concerning that he's seeking to have upwards of six individuals in a residence that is 1,300 square feet. Based on my quick math, that's 200 square feet per person roughly, not including a room for kitchen, dining room, living room, and any other common areas. And I don't see how that this use can be a benefit to the members that are residing in this house nor present the type of opportunity and, and vision that you want to have there in the City of Conyers and Rockdale County. And it clearly doesn't fit the kind of use that's surrounding this area. Once again, we are new to understanding this and have only been shared limited information that Mr. Gaither was able to share with us. Based on what I read regarding the overview and the non-conformity in that the uses don't seem to be prescribed within the O and I zoning, I, as a landowner and a property owner, in the immediate vicinity of this building, am against this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if there's nobody that's signed that would like to come up and speak, that concludes the public opinion. that concludes the public hearing.
All right.
I don't have a lot to say, but I do have a concern.
Sure. Would you say your name for the record?
My name's Daniel Edwards, and I'm with Magnolia Hospice.
Okay.
We lease the building directly behind this lot. I'm all for these kind of ministries. But in our setting, as you know, we're hospice, which means we have narcotics, we have medications that we have to keep secure in our building. And I understand this is a program, a rehabilitation program. However, I do have to be concerned about my staff, their safety. We are not exactly what you call a secured unit. So during daytime hours, people come in and out of our facility. They have to sign logs, but still, this is something that is of a large importance to me. And at this time, I wish y'all would consider this in our situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else signed up, so we will close the public hearing. Or do the, does the, do they have more time, the applicant? Okay, all right. We'll close the public hearing now, and we'll hear the city's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've heard, the property is in vicinity, especially along Millstead Road, Millstead Avenue, and Sigmund Road, have historically developed around the medical field due to the proximity of the hospital. Given the shape of the three named roads, this has become the Conyers-Rockdale Medical Triangle. Now, taking into consideration, the staff looks at those eight criteria in which we have to gauge a request for a special use permit. And looking at those eight criteria outside of any concerns about property values or anything like that, that's not something that staff takes into consideration. We look at the use as a use appropriate for the property, given the area around it, given the properties around it. Staff does not believe that that's the case, and we therefore recommend that the proposed, because the proposed use is not compatible with the surrounding and nearby office uses, staff recommends denying the request for a special use permit to establish a transitional housing facility in the Office Institutional Zoning District at 1555 Millstead Road, tax parcel 0670010009.
Thank you. Now, we're opening up for questions, discussion.
Mudassar Ahmad, I have a question. Is there any zoning in the City of Conyers where this use is permissible with the special use or otherwise?
Yes, sir. So the O and I zoning does require, or this type of use as a transitional housing facility requires a special use permit in order to be established in the O and I zoning district. Off the top of my head, I can't remember what other zoning districts, but it requires a special use permit no matter where. Because, again, we're way in gauging those compatibilities, and that's what the whole purpose is, is that it may be permissible in this zoning district, but we want to weigh out the compatibility of the proposed use versus the uses around it.
So you believe O and I is the right?
Sir?
O and I is the right district for that?
Yes, sir.
With the special use.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Questions? Comments?
Karen, I have a comment. I mean, it's
Okay.
What a great program, excellent program. I agree. Not a great location, terrible location. What a difficult endeavor to find a great location, however. I, it's, I would support them finding a great location if they could. I would support this program wholeheartedly in our community if they could find something. But that is not a good location at all, for so many reasons.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
It reminds me of a joke, if you allow me to tell you a joke. You know, there was a bouncer standing in front of a club, and everybody was walking in. Somebody went and asked him that, can I walk in? He said, no, you are not allowed. So really, that's what the problem I see over here, that we are, we have homelessness all over the city and county. We have those people who leave the jail, and they go and they live under the tree or under the bridge or somewhere else. But now we are asking for that permission to put them in a house with somebody who is taking care of them. But because we are asking for the permission, so, you know, they are not allowed. That's all I can say.
Well, I think, as Karen said, one of the things we need to obviously consider is any request, and I agree this is something that you as needed. There is some studies that talk about, you know, how reentry programs can be effective. Some of them are not. Some of them can cause more crime-egetic behavior. But, you know, have to be, the program has to be carefully designed, and I'm not in a position to really evaluate its design. But so I look at, you know, is it compatible? We have, you know, medical facilities all around there, and that's what we, that's why it requires a special use permit. It's not an automatic permitted zoning. We have to look at what's around there. And I don't see this as compatible with where it's being proposed. But that doesn't mean it's not needed. But that's not the criteria I'm looking at, whether it's needed or not, or whether it's compatible. Any other comments? Virtual comments? Are they, are they unmuted?
Yes, we're unmuted.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, if there's no comments, I'll entertain any motions.
I'll make a motion we deny.
It's a motion by Karen to deny. Is there, is there a second?
Tom Harrison, I'll second.
Second by Tom. Okay. We'll call, any further discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor of the motion to deny, say aye, and your name, please.
Tom Harrison, aye.
Karen, aye.
Ernestine Stovall-Goosby, aye.
Ryan Burrell, aye.
All right, and Steve Royce, aye. All opposed to the motion?
Mudassar Ahmad, aye.
All right, okay, all right. So the motion carries five to one.
And for all those, Mr. Chairman, for all those that are here tonight or watching live via Zoom, this request and the previous request will be before the mayor and council on the 19th at 7:00 PM. Same format, public hearing, but it is all in person. There will not be an option to dial in virtually.
Okay. And it's important to know, we're only, we're a recommending body, and the city council makes the final decision on this. Thank you. All right. Moving on to reports. The August 25th zoning public hearing has been canceled, or the next Board of Commissioner zoning public hearing will be published at a later date. The next regularly scheduled planning commission is September 10th, right here, 7:00 in the auditorium. It will also be a hybrid meeting, in-person or virtual. Any other comments or reports from county or city? Okay. Is there any public comments excluding items in the zoning process? There being none, sorry, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn, Ryan Burrell.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? No, not opposed, okay. Adjourned. Thank you all.